I've called a regular meeting in the debate to be counted, order Monday, October nine, twenty, twenty-three, six o'clock. Can you get a roll call, please?
Here.
Nothing.
Here.
You can stand again.
Here.
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 First item with approval of the agenda.
Will be approved.
Right.
Dean, Jason. Dean, the president, council please vote. Agenda is approved and for the record, Steve, does that mean how many would you like? Right, right, and next is approval of the agenda. Any item may be removed for step of the day.
Will be approved.
Second.
Jason and Sandy. Do you have a discussion, have a few votes? Approved, takes us to the floor, time to decide for comments in the public on topics of city business other than those. Is there anyone here to speak in public forum? Dean, then we'll close the public forum, moving to old business A. Resolution number eighteen, twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four, resolution authorized any support for the Main Street Iowa program and approve the agreement with Main Street Nevada and Iowa Economic Development Authority. We do have Emily and Debbie here, so if I have to say something, you're welcome to, because we have to.
The question, it's pretty much the same as it's always been, they're extending, we've been, I was extending the contract through twenty, twenty-seven. So it's two years longer than it used to be.
I need to approve.
All second, Sandy, Brian. Any discussion? Dean, then council please vote. It's approved, takes us to D, approve here, request number one for the field house, gym equipment project from H two I group in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Will be approved.
Right, Dean, Jason. You know, discussing, have a few votes. Approved, takes us to D, approve change order number six for twenty, twenty-two, three improvement from an act incorporated in the amount of twenty-eight thousand or fifty dollars.
Will be approved.
Jason, this meeting. You know, discussing, have a few votes. Approved, takes us to D, approve here, request number twenty-eight, to waste our treatment facility improvement space two from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated in the amount of one million, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, five hundred and ninety, or one million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. Will be approved. Dean. For Barbara's reference, we're on old business D.
Thank you.
You know, discussing, council please vote. That is approved, takes us to D, approve here, request number twelve, for waste treatment facility improvements space four from on back construction policy, not a one hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Will be approved. Got it, Dean, Brian. You know, discussing, council please vote. Is approved. Takes us to that F, approve recommendation from council development committee for select the pulmonary and spilt with services proposal from asking signs of consulting, but with our treatment facility.
Second, Barb. Thing.
I'm looking to do this, because this is basically just trying to shore up our park agreement. I mean, I read through it, but a lot of the talk about that. Uh, that is part of it, the know that they're going to be basically redoing the whole empire. So there's several things, there's going to be a pre-treatment agreement wherever, for all of industries, that would include several different classifications for commercial in this, different kinds of industry, and then you have your residential rate. He's going to be doing studies for rates and compare those with everybody else. Uh, he's also doing all of the studies regarding to our current agreements and, um, basically the flows and making sure they're aligned with everything.
Same, didn't we do this already? When we decided to build this, why didn't we do this, because we talked about a rate increase?
They've done the global rate study, but they haven't specifically looked at all the intricacies of wastewater and the different types of nutrient reduction.
So this is definitely required more was more refined.
So this is really focused around, yeah, I know we did the heavy users.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for my question. Did you have a motion the second correct?
You did, yeah.
Any other discussion? Council please vote. Approved, takes us to new business A, discussion appropriate quality regarding our picture services for the CDB downtown, it's out, we invite all the community bring a proposal.
Yeah, so we had, we did do a review for the three applications that we received, we received them from Rod Curtis, Martin Gardner, and RMH Services. Uh, we have four different scores. Uh, one score came in was Curtis, an additional with Curtis, the third was with Martin Gardner and all.
I guess I scored those MGA, Curtis kind of, that, like, me, either one I'd be happy with.
So Curtis has worked on six, uh, Rod Curtis Architecture has worked on sixteen different facade projects, this with CDBG. Martin Gardner has worked on seven different, sorry, twelve projects and sixteen, and Martin Gardner has worked on seven CDBGs. Uh, so the experience with both of those have been very promising from in the past, and, um, one of those Knoxville, they're, they finished up this, this last year with, uh, Rod Curtis. Uh, Martin Gardner is, does a lot of projects in Marion, they've done a lot of facade work, same with RMH, RMH has done a lot of facade work, but unfortunately, they didn't come with any CDBG experiments. Okay. You could see that in their review, their application, correct?
Good, you have experience with either name too. Just in writing, like, you know, I've seen their, their names come through over the year with the, we, okay. You know, obviously, you need to take some, for the, the man that wrote, I think the more experienced people, the other.
So your guidance and recommendation have all moved to accept, whichever one you guys saw.
I was layered in toward that, okay, but it's good to review. Better, I would be, if I pass my data motion for, for first.
We're good. Give a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Then council please vote. It's approved, takes us to B, discussion appropriate quality regarding, um, CBD project, storm line issues in the alleyway.
So there are two invoices, uh, the first one is for the television line, which one he's brought up before, he also brought up, brought up the concrete. Uh, on there, you'll see that he is going to be sending check-in for half the bill, and his, that second one is for twenty-four floors, so the city would, uh, was, so they, they, the other.
We're looking for a motion to approve the first invoice of the entire end fifty percent of that.
We will do approve the first invoice, uh, for the second invoice.
All second, motion second, uh, Jason and Brian, the discussion.
So is it on track, I think it may meet in its sole. Longer, in my opinion.
Five percent.
How much?
Five percent.
Yeah, so no, so that was kind of it, that's kind of where we left it. Yeah, I have a problem with that. I mean, I get it. But they can always, you can always play dumb. When you make them stay, and that's kind of what I think, I guess.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have any kind of recourse, what's that case?
Unfortunately, I agree with you.
You know, I think it's going to end up costing a lot this, Andy and, but whoever else we're going to have to repair, because he's not going to be the only one. It's going to end up costing for some of the contractors to care, or at least notify them, it might have cost them a little bit of money when they did it, but not this. You know, I mean, that's kind of the responsibility of your contractor, they can't say, oh, we do, really? You know, I mean. I don't know, just my opinion, I don't know, I don't know if we have any kind of recourse.
I don't think we do have any recourse, and I think we'd be spending more money chasing it than, than, um.
And I don't disagree with that.
And I don't know how much would have been part of the project, but like you said, there would have been some expense originally to that. We just don't know exactly how much because they didn't find it initially.
Or they started.
Yeah.
Or we have other business owners who are saying, or saying they're right, they're looking at, one of them buried it. Was it Jeremy, I guess. What that, then, that divorce.
Well, yeah, there are three buildings.
They were, they're hooked up, uh, so. Uh, then I believe you have some flooding inside, uh, generally may have had minimal, but I don't think he had much, uh, but all of those were fixed during the scene project.
I was just wondering about the general building, who went through it so bad by having a price on it for that one. If they ended up digging a lot.
Yeah, I, I believe they had a whole other room that they found, from, I, but I don't know exactly, I haven't talked to Tom and.
I don't believe the general building had any water, they, during their construct and, and sealed out the outside. And so they were.
Oh, they, they got the water before, oh, I, that was, the way I heard that, thank you.
Yeah, it was like Jordan was saying, it, it, the portion of the building that has been baited to a cabin that would keep water, but that is being addressed as well.
So these two invoices weren't going to have to them account what I was trying to start.
Correct.
Yeah, this is a, we were like, wait, I'm sure.
We can, yeah, or you didn't have. And those also aren't any damages, that, no, right now, just, it's concrete replacement, and we originally scoped in the line to discover this a month ago.
We'll be seeing more.
Right. I think there's a lot we do. With contract being there.
Has it been formal, uh, contract?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I asked them how much they, um, basically, if they would be able to put some of the bill, and they said, well, it wasn't that else because of the way they read the contract. They didn't think they were the fault. And like you were saying, it's the word against their employees, business owners, and in the city. And unfortunately, that, that worker that saw the line, that told them that I just wanted to look it up, is no longer alive to talk to you well.
Going forward, they have to pay more to get all that in plans of, so it doesn't just say that fix it once upon discovery. Which adds more cost, but prevents it, same thing from happening again.
And the insurance that they cover, that they carry covered is, is more catastrophic.
Yeah, I, I don't know about her insurance, but I know there's quite a deal, I don't know if I'll need more access to the data.
Any more discussion, I'm looking. Dean, then council please vote. Is approved, takes us to D, approve FY twenty, twenty-four human services request of eleven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and fifty seven, round number two, Nevada Foundation.
All right.
Jason. Any discussion?
Uh, and Brenda's email asking if we want to send you to another round, or we don't, or you're standing there before we can decide. Both of us would like to see one more round.
I agree.
I have, um, we've got money there, and we'll use it up, that's why we were trying.
And I just recently found out that Cuddy's coverage is in the need of some finance, they're going to do a fundraiser, but they'd all be eligible, they haven't applied either, and we're going to make sure they're aware, but after the third round, it, it happened.
Is there something that needs to go into the application, to address, or do you want to comment about this? Because that certainly be provided upfront based on their last year's information, that, that looks like it's appearing. Yeah, two out of three times, which means harmony written, harmony written before, and maybe the reports, which maybe would have had a little bit of issue from their past ask. So maybe against the first one, yes. Yeah, exactly, I did do my comments, the things that I will comment that would need to be part of this. Right, yeah, it can be part of the formal agreement. So I think if they want upfront, part of the application, that money, boy, having, well, it is in the application.
But I don't think we need it. Exactly. Yeah, I'll be all transparents over my top. And, and my whole issue, one thing is, is a, is a collective group in the, in the foundation, you know, we're really trying to focus on the data. And those two, those two applicants are more of a story county, more of a story county, and so I have no problem with funding those things, but my concern is. Is the money that we're giving them going to Nevada, or they spending it in Maxwell, or, or.
To prevent you, it isn't.
So salvation, I, I see, I don't think we got the information from them on their application. Why, unless I overlooked it, but I don't think any of that.
My very specific, the, for that, yeah.
Well, that's the only thing, I just want to be sure.
From the end of the show, she did get, get stuff from salvation army, and I believe she's going to be sending it over to Karen.
Yeah, but not when we did the review, I don't, you know, pretty sure, and like I said, I'm a problem with it, that's why it's the, I would just like to know, I think everyone probably, really, because.
Of course.
You know, are they, are they spending that amount of money, or it could be more, but it's still the whole, the.
I'd love to go back and say, here, here's where, if anybody else, all right, here's where we're at.
Yeah, because there'll be other people that have asked.
I would say it to that point, though, we've really, we've been advocating all this, this way, so it's better.
Oh, I think, so it makes so much easier, to be reviewing this from a modest information that we get, how could we, we.
Usually, I think, uh, when we're making whatever, it's too fun. Here we go.
You can hold that one. Then, 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 please vote. It's approved, takes us to E, approve neighborhood improvement incentive program in the form of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars, summer school home centers, it's saved, it's out, someone, maybe Barb. That, through their last week.
Yeah, there are new road projects, you know, last.
I was just going to say, everything is at last.
Yeah. It is.
You know, discussion, council please vote. In five, there's a good approach. Flattened their offline, does everybody, I? You guys, I?
I, yeah.
Flattened their line. Okay, so that takes us to report, starting with city administrator.
All right, uh, so last couple of weeks, I've had meetings with, and asked you, or with our consultant, we've had an insurance meeting. And we can't allow to discuss the cat, cat grant. Several standing meetings, such as A D C, N E D C, Atlantic Community Foundation, met with Emily, also with Brenda. Um, also have a chance to go to the manufacturing breakfast this last week, Kent Dave from Kent Corporation was the speaker, and I was very informative, that I have no idea that Kent Corporation was kind of responsible for so many different. Aspects of the market, they do a lot of different foods, dry, dry and liquid foods, and beverages, cornstarch, corn syrup, a lot of agriculture, which I knew they're kind of big in the feeds. And then pet food products as well, and they also have like, uh, uh, thirst quencher, and all, all sorts of stuff, so it was really fun listening to it. And then we also had a meeting with H R Green, going over our C I P project, uh, and updating those for the future years, and it's five to seven years. And then the other thing that Karen and I and Michael Maloney, our financial advisor, has been, what we've been discussing is, um, the loan that we're going to be taking out for the wastewater treatment facility. And we will be starting all of that ordinance meeting next week, because we need to have something finalized by the season. Um, so we, uh, this is for the sixteen million dollars, which is the twenty-five, twenty-seven percent portion, uh, works portion that we're discussing, which would be in the agreement if we're, we're done, but since we are. Having gone and doing, taking a different approach, we figured we need to get a little bit more proactive and make sure that we are getting that taken care of and not, uh, losing more funds. That's all, Mr. President.
Moving on to reports, I just had a few things, I wanted to congratulate Main Street for the fun homecoming Kailgate, very well attended for a company who knew, and you think, you really enjoyed that, it feels great to see more events growing through the compound. Another thing that stood out was Ames Economic Development Council held their board meeting here in Nevada, and I was reflecting on when I first thought on council, and I know Brian and Andy were around for those days. When, you know, we go to do a development project in the city of Ames, didn't know anything about it, started to freak out, and, you know, so it's pretty incredible to see the turnaround, the partnering, and having the. Community leaders from Boone and Story Townies all together, and they're going to keep moving that around throughout the territory, so, um, just kind of show the collaboration, it's very high on a regional basis. Also, um, and I know we mentioned it before, but making sure you have it on your calendar for the fourteenth, for Field House delegation, sixteen for the annual celebration, so that'll be a busy week. And then the Nevada Foundation did some strategic planning last week, and I think, um, what, some exciting things to share about the next, um, not a campaign, but drive for, um, where we're headed. So it'll be seasons of giving, really focused on fostering quality across the whole community, we're, we're excited about that, and it'll really play into the discussion of the acting services and making that more of a public private partnership. Um, any questions at all, Randy? Dean, then move on to council report. Thanks, walking back to staff.
You have my report, um, we have a couple trainings this, uh, Friday, and then next week, these will be out, because we're always, um, and. Uncle Buddy Committee, he is next, he, uh, next, he.
You can prepare. We're about to hear from the next two here in a, in a bit, you guys have anything to write on our report?
No, we'll wait till we share with you here a little bit.
Sounds good. Keith?
Uh, I don't really have anything, uh, still moving on the hiring process, people can, they're going to background.
Thank you. Ryan?
Can we get a, can we get a touch of it for me?
You got it, Paul? Any question? Darren.
Again.
Okay. So would that anything else from council before we adjourn the formal meeting and move into the work session?
I wish to adjourn.
Of course. Jason, all those in favor?
Right.
And vote. Okay, we're going to keep it streaming, because I know there are people that wanted to be able to watch that either now or later, um, so we'll move into the work session, specifically about the field house, and, um, that was something that. Um, we had pulled out of, of business item, that was something that I asked for last week, and it's not the second guest, the work that the park board or staff has put into this, because I know they've put a lot of thought into it. It was more for the fact of making sure that all of us are on the same page, we have time to ask questions, we have time for public input, it's a really important thing that a lot of people care about, right, and so we've spent a lot of effort to get this project done. And so I thought it was worth, um, slowing down a little bit, making sure we're really thorough, and really give the community time to ask questions, make their voices heard, and Marlet's can hopefully help us make things really understandable, we can give information out there for folk that aren't part of it, so that. Hopefully they can understand it better, because I think some of it really came down to reading the document in the packet, and jumping to conclusions, and everybody reading it differently, and, but I'm excited to hear from staff and the board, I know we do have some partner back board members here that. Um, I'd like to introduce themselves to the council too, and just, for anyone who is going to speak, we do want to put from board members, but just, we'll have you go in your microphone, so that people can pick it up on the, coming to given, but. So that, even over.
Okay, thank you, um, we'll take this opportunity tonight to go through the packet of information that was shared with you in the packets, went out on Thursday evening, I believe. So, a lot of, uh, a lot of discussion, and a lot of thought is going into this over the last several months, trying to come up with basically a starting point. Um, we're unique in our facility, and so, um, we didn't have a lot to compare to necessarily, but, um, felt like we needed to put, uh, put something together, come up with a starting point, share it with you. Um, as the mayor indicated, I think the biggest thing for you tonight, and I'll turn this over around for it, is to kind of explain those different pieces to that, and I think. Um, by going through that, you have questions, um, you know, asked, and I will try and answer questions, but I'll let Rhonda go through that, um, with you. As we, uh, proceed, and then following, um, a little bit of information, explanation on what was in your packet, we also have a second, um. Uh, maybe proposal or option for you to consider, but we'd like to look at the first one first, and just explain all the components of that, I think there's a lot there that maybe didn't get digested, uh, from everybody, so we want to make sure that that's out there, that you understand that. Um, but before we go in farther, I will introduce some park board members that are here, Glenn Miller is our board chair, Jeff Parker is our bike care, and also on our board, only our newest, you can write one.
Yeah.
So, um, if you have questions for them, we shared this with them, um, a week or so ago at our park board meeting, and so, um, we'll take this opportunity to share it with you. Hopefully we can answer your questions, and at this point, I'll turn it over to Rhonda, she's really put a ton of work into this, um, her and Sarah, um, that I've been involved to, but countless hours, they have spent having discussions and. Trying to meet and digest all the different scenarios that may come up, has been pretty, pretty overwhelming, so, um, I'm proud of what they put together, and they did a good job, so. The intent is to look at something for everybody, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rhonda and let her, let her share with you.
Okay, thank you, um, thanks for the opportunity to come here and discuss this with you, uh, obviously, we thought we put something pretty good together, and we really felt we made something for everyone. Um, we didn't probably get all the information that should have been, or could have been put in it, because, to be honest, it took. Sarah and I months to wrap our head around actually all the different scenarios and all the different ideas, and how we can make this fit for everyone in our community to have the opportunity to utilize the facility. At the capacity that they would like to utilize it, and I think there are different possibilities within our community. And I think there are different possibilities within our community of what they would like to do or see. So I guess when we went into this, we wanted to make sure that in addition to our current programming that we have, which we all have to remember that this is a program based facility. So our current programs take place first, is that we wanted to expand upon services to our seniors, adults and young children. And that's always been, been our goal, was to hit all those different segments of the population. Something that we haven't been able to do with space limitations of what we have. So that was first and foremost. So when we thought about that, that is when, how we came upon the playground and track pass. Okay, so that's the pass that would be free to anyone that's, that has a properly set up rec desk account, right? So if you're on rec desk, what you're going to be able to do is go on and purchase this free pass, all right? It's not really a purchase, you're just basically signing up for this free pass to utilize the field house. So its intent is, is for, for our residents to be able to utilize the facility during staff hours. Now, those staff hours, and people got caught up on this a little bit, is we always, we said that we would have staff hours from eight to five. What they didn't catch is also during our programmed times. Now, those of you that may not know, we have programs going on a lot, okay? And when I say a lot, I'm talking about all the practices, all the games, all the stuff that takes place outside of hours, you know, during the evenings and on the weekends and stuff like that. So it, it wasn't just during the daytime that we were talking about people being able to utilize the facility. So even though we basically call it a playground and track pass, we, there's also opportunities for those passovers to use the areas of the facility not being used by another program or renter. So I put together a little handout for you. If you see that little red key there, I want you to just look at the purple. Okay, so that's like a sample week. All right, can, can you see that? Like, that's like a sample week. So when you look at the sample week, that, that track and playground pass, imagine it, is, that's always going to be there. That's the intent, is that track and playground is always going to be available. But the purple in that spreadsheet shows all the additional times in which a family could come and utilize the facility. So if you can see that, it includes nights, it includes weekends, it includes some extended time during some open gym time. Because people, I mean, we've been, I've been around long enough to know that after a program gets over, people like to stick around and shoot hoops and do different things like that. So you can look on there and see, we built in some extra time. I mean, we have other things going on in the facility, like on, on Sundays. We've been talking with the soccer club on having some sort of, of, I don't want to call it fast speed air, but I'm going to call it fast speed right now, soccer tournament. Once again, people are able to come in on Sundays during that, that time, and they'll be able to utilize the courts. It's kind of like during basketball season when we have basketball games going on. We want people to, to come in and we, we want to block off this, the south side of the, I always miss the south, the north side of the turf. And let kids go run around and play. That's open free time, okay? Open free time. So I just want to really make it clear that there are other opportunities for this pass where people get to utilize this facility at no cost to them. Sign up, show up when it's open. Now, they're going to have to take a little time and maybe look at our rec desk calendar to know when those are. Or they could dial five one five three eight two four three five two and ask, you know, hey, what are your hours for this? We'll be happy to answer their questions. Or we might find that we need to post that on a daily basis. I won't know yet. I know what that was, but we sure will, yes.
So you're saying the purple thing?
Yep.
You have the playground and track pass, you can still go on towards the turf?
Unused areas. At that point. Unused areas, so a lot, yeah, whatever. Yeah, during unused areas, okay? Um, so basically, with that pass, youth are going to need to be accompanied by an adult, okay? We wouldn't consider like extra equipment or anything like that being used. And I think that, and we've heard a lot about the family passes, okay? That's kind of your family pass in my mind, right? You can bring your entire family. And, you know, Tommy can be playing basketball, being coached by park and rec staff or their parent volunteer while a group of moms get together and walk on the track. While maybe the dads are downstairs in the playground watching the other kids play on the playground. So that to me is a family pass. And that's what we looked at as a huge segment of our population, being able to utilize the facility is with that pass.
I don't think I asked you this, but right here you have, I think, two weeks worth of basically planned program and stuff like that. So are people going to be able to see three weeks out, four weeks out, in order to kind of plan for when they want to show up?
Sure. You can look at the rec desk calendar, so that's what makes it hard is, right? That's one week. Like to sit down and write that all out, it's crazy, but that's what the rec desk calendar allows us to do and see. So you, you will be able to see that on the rec desk, but we have to get people signed up. Like, we will be able to, once we know how many basketball teams we have, we don't even know how many basketball teams we have, right? Because there's red tape in Edinburgh yet. But once we get that all set up, we'll be able to, yeah, in rec desk, you have to actually put it in under the game, and it's not a game, but we'll be able to put this in there. So people will be able to see, oh, court A, or Almeco Court, let's just say, has practices on it until eight o'clock. But let's say mid-stage court only has them until seven. So we, no, we can go in and we'll have a court. We can go hang out and play and stuff on, from seven to eight P M, pretty strong. Once again, there are so many different scenarios and situations. So that is something that, that people want to be able to look and see and what's available for them to use. Yeah.
So as far as the rec, like, kind of what they, they do.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, we've been quite proactive about that. We have, we had our little site up night, we had our, our night, what, people thing? Yeah, it's been a while ago, but, um, actually just the other day, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, Sarah and I went over to the senior center. We were part of their little program, we signed some people up. So we are helping them as, as we go along. We can always sign someone up for, for the rec, a rec desk account. We've been helping them do that. And then we can obviously help them, get them signed up for the, this pass. They're very much, all the seniors we talked to are very excited and very understanding of this. So I, I don't think we're going to hear any complaints from them. And I hope clarifying this pass will help some of the other families and people that might have understood, have this conception, realize that, oh, we're going to have the opportunity to utilize.
One of the misconceptions with what they, you referenced, too, people not understanding they can use other unused places and then.
Yeah.
So have you thought about a different name for that ad, like basic or something that, it's more than just the track and the playground?
Yes, we, we went round and round about that today, actually, a little bit, talked about it. But at the end of the day, that's what we always want to have available during those times, is we want to make sure that that's available. And then to me, the other areas are just areas or bonus areas, but yes, we can look at that. I don't know if anybody has, I mean, we're open to suggestions on what we might be able to call that. I mean, that's something that we can think about and try to come up with something else, but that is, that is a key. That is what we wanted to make sure we had available for people, you know, during all those, all those, during that time from eight to five and whenever we had programs going on.
You guys said.
Playground track and all used, yeah.
Yeah, we can just add it to that.
Because what you're describing, Jive, is what we've been seeing all the time. When there's not a program in you, you can go in and use the bay while the building's open. And so I think people just thought that that wasn't the case anymore and they looked just at a document in here. So as, as much as we can make it clear, I think it's in the name of it. I think part of it even goes back to, you know, we went to the field house and people were thinking something different with rec center. So the terminology just can make a huge difference.
We had you hearing you. There in the back, I don't know if I say, all the clues.
It all requires three deeper, so the more obvious, the better.
Yeah, exactly. I, I think, I think we can figure something out. Yeah.
I keep thinking about our idea of how bringing score indoors.
Yep.
And so, you know, people walk around all the time, they shoot hoops, we've got some of the playground and track. That is really synonymous. And then the unused areas, there's not eternity. Maybe somebody's family of twenty doesn't pick up a softball game, you know? And so I think it really is reflective of that original concept that we're bringing with outside, inside, that we can have something three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Minus three days.
Yeah, I know.
Got it. Unless you have a bomb. Well, still minus three days.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We, we were in the initial proposal, we, we had not, first of all.
We took out parentheses, parentheses.
Just give it out, yeah.
So that way staff knows that.
They're not going to have to worry.
Only three, they're not going to have to worry about being called.
So anyway, yes.
But that, that helps that. I think that helps that people keep thinking about what's outside, bringing it in. Yeah, I think this has done really strong just to that concept.
Um, so like to go through the other, the other passes that we have as well. So the adult access pass, this is really a cool part of this, and this is why we set up with the fobs and the security of the building is so that we can, we can offer kind of a different tier level of how somebody might want to utilize the facility. So, um, basically, that's offered for those that want to use the facility outside of normal staff hours, okay? More program hours. It includes a playground track pass, so that's all included, but it also includes access from five A M to eleven P M with that file pin number or key card. And that would kind of depend on if you like pay the year round or what you wanted as far as, or paid monthly. And keep in mind, this is a little access pass. Well, the reason we offer the monthly is because we know we have some snowbirds and people like that, that might only go on the bay for months a year. Or they like to walk, like them, likes to walk outside most of the time, but you might want to come inside for months, I mean, years. So we thought about our demographics as well and the fact that they really do like to walk outside because we have a nice presence with them. I mean, we do. And, you know, after a while, it, it's nice to, to maybe be, be able to go back outside. So that's why we offered that. And it's much more easy to offer that monthly, monthly payment there, but I'll get into the use part of that later. So anyway, individuals with this pass can rent out other services at no additional cost during renewable time, along with the use of equipment during, during that spending time that they've, so, for example, they can use the, have pitching machines. I mean, so have the turf with the batting cages and all, it's decked out, guys. I mean, it's decked out. When I'm talking, I'm sure Brian knew all the time, all the pitching machines. We've got, we've got a pitching mound, we've got, it, it's just set up, all right? So we want, want people to be able to utilize us within L streets. And you guys approved, I think, it was about ten thousand dollars worth of equipment for the batting cage area alone, so there's a lot there. You know, we'll set up the volleyball stuff for you or help you set it up, getting the pickleball set up. You know, we have, we have a lot of dollars for pickleball and stuff like that, whatever. So, so this pass with the adult access is to encourage parents to purchase, the pass is to provide, that's one thing, right? Get them come in, bring in their kids, work with them. Encourage adult wellness through various activities. People play, play basketball, play football, volleyball, whatever it might be, they can do all of that, but we see the whole access panel. And then we want them to gain participation in, in activities without having to have structured leagues and stuff where you have to pay for each league or whatever it might be. My thought was, is why don't we try to build some of these adult programs off of open and play and see what really takes off and see if we need to develop leagues? Or maybe people just like showing up and playing and splitting up into teams and having a good time. I don't know yet. I can't, I can't tell you what our bill demographic is going to want to do. But if it, if it starts off and it's big and it's huge and we need to develop structured leagues, we'll do that. But I think this was a good starting point. It, it gets people more, maybe more involved in pickleball, people of that nature. And we thought that that was pretty affordable for a year long pass to get to do all of those things and to reserve those, those areas and best there is going to be, and from five A M to eleven P M because it's actually affordable for everyone, so.
What, what, what do you know?
Twelve bucks, yeah, twelve dollars.
So basically, as an adult, what I'm hearing is, you know, if you go with the free one, you're just going to take your chances and find something that's open when it's open. Where if you, if you pay, you can reserve ahead of time and know next Friday, I can bring some friends in, it's five thirty, play basketball, because I have that record.
Or, or you can, you know, like, like our pickleballers, let's just say. So they have this whole preservation system that will run in their home. It's, but where they can say, hey, Nevada Pickleball is taking place, let's say, nine to eleven A M on Tuesdays. Want to get a meeting up? They actually have this app where they can post that, can be posted, and then it shows who's all throwing up so they know if people are actually going to be there to go play pickleball. Which is kind of cool. So that's, that's just part of pickleball and what they have available to them. So that's just something that people can know. But the point of that is, is they can pay a hundred and twenty dollars and they can play pickleball indoors. And we can set that all up and find out what times work for them. And then we can have it all set up for them and where they can play, pay the drop in fee. What's the other part of this? Is that people can also just pay the drop in fee of five dollars. They don't have to buy it. You can choose.
Because then again, the difference between the drop in fee is you get to reserve a spot rather than the free pass, you just find a safe, one of those.
Right, right.
Because I think that was also something that people were trying to wrap their heads around is what the drop in, what that did versus the.
It's kind of, it's using the athletic surface and making sure it's set up for you to the line of wind. So like, let's say, I guess Jason, I'll use volleyball as an example for you, right? So let's just say that we decide that we want to play volleyball on Wednesday nights. I'm, I'm just coming up with an idea. And we can get anybody that has an adult access pass to come in on Wednesday nights, play volleyball, we'll have a setup for you. If that becomes the trend and that becomes what happens, we'll do that. But there are other adults that could come in as well that could pay the five dollar drop in fee. But actually, it would be a punch pass that you purchase online, scan your little card and it takes, takes like one of the punches. That makes sense. So we don't necessarily have to have that staff during that time, but we can if we find that we need to. Okay? Does that make sense? Hope so. Once again, it takes a little bit to wrap your head around it, the fact that we can't staff the facility all the time for everything. But what we want to try to do is go offer all the opportunities that we can for people. So yeah, did I answer your question, Brad? Yes. Awesome. Then with the youth passes. Now, this, I think, was a lot of the sticker shot for some people where they thought it was expensive, okay? And the left lane legends and the, and the junior left lane legends pass, when for youth that basically want the open field house experience, all right? You can basically use that thing and use it to its highest potential. So it would include the playground track pass, access with adult supervision from five A M to eleven P M. So if you're a go-getter and you're working on pitching and you're going to work on pitching at six o'clock in the morning with your pitching coach or with your mom or dad, you can go in there. If you have this pass and your, and your mom or dad or whoever it is has the adult access pass, right? Because you can have access, you can read for the time and it's not, it's no additional cost, okay, so I need everybody to kind of want to take that. Um, so it's. Basically, the cost of this pass is higher because of all it offers and the necessary staffing as well that it takes, okay? So youth are gonna be more expensive to supervise than adults, I hope we all know that, right? Okay, I think that youth are worth supervising adults. So, and first and foremost, it's kind of like our our after-school program. We included that in this pass because we were trying to hit different segments of the population that might be looking for different things. So after-school, it might be something for that middle school group, you know, that fifth through eighth grade group. I could see them wanting to come out to the fieldhouse, well, we're gonna need to have staff and supervision for that and there's a definite cost to all of them. Um, and then, um, we also have, um. You know, including the batting cages, the turf areas, opportunities for different individual practices, things like that in this pack. So, meaning that they would have access, whoever part purchases this pass without any additional fees. So, if you look at that, um, alone. But not having to like rent each specific area or something like that, if you're really into. If you really want the after-school program, it's gonna be way less expensive for you to have. The purchases passed and it wouldn't be to like pay on a monthly basis or on a year goal. I think that that's something that I want, I wanna make sure people understand. And then, the other thing is, is if you're really into, um. You know, wanting to shoot hoops or if you really wanna use the batting cages and you wanna go in and hold these off time and. And hit the court hard or you wanna hit all the time or you wanna pitch or you wanna work on your soccer skills, whatever that might be. This is the pass for you, okay, this pass isn't for everybody. It's, this is the pass for those that wanna put in and do take the extra time and go in on those odd death of hours and really put in some work and. Work on some things, so Brian, all you do is an example, okay? So, you're too, well, let's say, right now, let's say you and Sam, alright? Can I use that as an example?
Okay, so I was gonna ask you about it.
Yeah, same. You and Sam want to, I don't know if you want to do baseball, okay? Okay, so for two hundred, two hundred fifty, three hundred fifty, three hundred seventy dollars, right? Is that my math?
Yep.
Three hundred and seventy dollars. You and Sam and go in, you can see all those days where I have available for rent on my little credit fee, right? Available for reservation, if you have that for the entire year, you can go in and reserve that. Cage or whatever you'd like to, um, and it won't wouldn't cost you the additional twenty-five dollar rental fee. That's just your pass for the whole year, go use it, reserve it, use it, and that's it. There's no additional fees, does that make sense?
Yeah, but my question about that, we'll we'll do this youth passer. It says here it has to be, it has to be adult supervision. So, it also says in the adult access that if I buy an adult access, I can reserve anything I want. If I have to under twenty-nine or that, so. If I didn't wanna spend the two hundred fifty for him, can I just pay five bucks for him every time I wanna go in there, we wanna do the drop-in?
No, because the the drop-in for the, it's not five dollars for the for that area. And the initial proposal shows for that.
Yeah, so is is there gonna be for this, this uh, in the junior, the left lane and the juniors, is there gonna be monthly? So I'm gonna, I'll use Sam again, okay, later, sir. Can't throw a tail dance, not even one little baseball season's over and then. Do I need a year pass for two hundred fifty dollars for it? Probably not. You know, twice the money, two hundred fifty dollars to get in there to to use it for, you know, plus when it gets nice, we'll probably be out of that. So we're down to January, February, March, probably April, so four months. So that's sixty-some dollars a month, we do two fifty. You see where I'm getting at, that is there is that there's a potential for, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying it's too expensive, it's not too expensive, but. There's gonna be other people who stay in store with scenario, you know, you guys, you said earlier about, there's a lot more supervision. That's why the youth passes are so much, but it also says here, they have to be supervised by an adult if they wanna use anything but a track and playground. So, to me, as a parent or any parent or adult, you or anything, we have to supervise them. So I don't know that, I mean, it just seems like money's backwards, it seems like the little kids would be more supervision than the big kids, but. You also have to, they have to be supervised by an adult. So there really isn't any more cost to supervise those kids because we have to supervise them, it says right in here, they have to be adult supervision. Unless our rec is gonna supply them, which I don't think you guys wanna do that. I mean, I get it, it's the after-school program, but I'm talking more of the. You know, anyone, and I'm gonna use Tony, so he's been here, um. You know, the the school is gonna wanna use stuff too, so I'm assuming we're gonna have a mutual. Facilities agreement like we have with them now, that they can use our stuff just like we use their stuff, maybe not, I don't know, we've had that discussion with the school or not. Fairly old, so we talked about uh, leaving that back up and we'll revisit it. So, so that's, I mean, so if, say, and I'm gonna use the two that use the gyms the most in the winter, be the volleyball program. Baseball, softball, sorry, breathing. You know, they're always on top of each other, it's just the name of the business, you know, there's gonna be some of those programs that wanna use the fieldhouse. So do, I mean, and I guess I'll probably get the card ahead of the awards here, but you know, what do we do there? All the kids on the volleyball team have to have a pass to. To go in there, even though it'll be supervised by the coach or?
Brian, that's the whole point, is nobody has to.
Well, that's right, you just told me I have to buy a two hundred fifty dollar pass for my kid and now I'm gonna buy it for twenty-nine.
But you don't, but you don't have to buy it, so if you wanted to go in, just rent it during. When and rent the whatever you wanted to use, you could do that as well.
Yeah, but I'm saying if I if I can rent it all at one point, then why do I need to pay the two fifty for my kid? To use the the facility that I already rented, if I pay, I have the ability to pay. Am I not, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not explaining that to her. It says here, if I have the adult thing, I can reserve, I can reserve batting cage. Volleyball court, whatever I want, no additional charge.
Right.
But then you're telling me that if I want, cause someone said earlier, I don't know who, hey, you can bring all your kids in and. And rent the basketball court, cause you're in a, you have an adult pass. But then now we're saying, but every one of those kids has to have a two hundred fifty dollar pass, so you have to spend. Eleven hundred dollars a year for you and your family to afford shoes, cause you wanna reserve it. Am I, am I not understanding the fees correctly?
Well, you can still revert it, though, that's that's the key.
But it doesn't do me any good to reserve it if I can't bring my kid with me without spending two hundred fifty dollars.
But you can reserve it at the rental rate.
Instead, I should have to because I already paid my hundred twenty to have access to that part.
I think she's saying if you do not pay the hundred and twenty, you can pay for the rental fee for the.
What she's saying, why would I do that if I can spend a hundred and twenty to get an adult pass? It says right here, I can reserve that area, so, but now, so that's an advantage to this. That's an advantage, no doubt, but now to this advantage, because I can't, I can't bring my kid in unless I pay two hundred fifty dollars.
Is the two hundred and fifty the one that includes all the programming?
All in.
Program.
Two hundred fifty, so that's eighteen.
So, the the two hundred fifty dollar pass would include to school. And utilization of the athletic surfaces with an adult from five AM to eleven PM. So. If someone wants to, let's say, Brian, you wanna take in a small group of kids to go hit, right? So, I think that that's the decision that would have to be made, but there are options for kids that don't want that. Pass to be able to utilize those areas.
But only with adult supervision.
Correct, somebody has to get them in.
So, so then if 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 a kid has this two hundred fifty dollar pass and their parents wanna come with them. They have to spend a hundred twenty dollars to get a bob in there. But so then, to me, if we're doubling down on the same thing. I think we're doubling down on the same thing. There's all this advantage to be in the adult path, which is a great advantage for for people that don't have kids. I think if you start having kids, then it's not affordable for, I mean, so now I wanna use the facilities. But I can't unless I spend two fifty for my kid. The eleven eighteen, which in my opinion, there is gonna be a lot of after-school programs for the eleven eighteen crowd because. If they're really into sports, they're gonna be attracted, unless you said, using me for an example, you know, Sam, if someone's not playing basketball or whatever.
Right, but to me, I think there should be something, somewhere in there like a family thing or something.
Because if I have to supervise him, I have to pay this, I have to according to the rules. Because it has to be an adult to get him in to do this one. And the only way he can do this one is if he pays two fifty and I buy this.
But I'm gonna go back again, no, because you can rent the space, you don't have to pay that. You can still rent the cage at twenty-five dollars, Brian, and bring enough to three kids, or bring have three people in a cage.
Okay, so I can buy this.
No, you don't have to buy that.
But what if I do?
Well, then you can go walk the track and you can go.
But it's cause I can use, probably so too, cause I can rent anything I want. Baseball, softball, soccer.
Right.
So you're saying, I do this, have to do it for free, but then I can rent it at twenty dollars an hour, so I don't have to pay two fifty?
As an adult access pass holder, you could rent a cage for twenty-five dollars an hour.
But it says here I don't have to because it's included for this hundred twenty dollars. Rental athletic services and use of the equipment and no additional costs. During rental time, cause that's when I would do it, during rental time, let's say eight o'clock at night, that's when I would do it. But I can't, it says I can, I don't have to pay, but now I have to pay because I have a kid. Or multiple kids.
Okay, so I think I finally wrapped my head around, that that is not the intent of what that was supposed to be, okay, so.
And 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 I I think I get your intent, but I think that, I think that's part of some of the, the other is. If if I have to be there as an adult supervisor, which of course I have a problem and a lot of. It gets pretty spendy if I wanna do what I can do with my old pass, but my kids also have to have a two hundred fifty dollar pass to come in and. Play catch or something that I just reserve, go and hit, if me supervise while hitting, they could have two fifty. So, and I'll use paint, cause you brought up the stuff, so I got paint and family oil. Five hundred, plus the hundred twenty. And that's just three, that's family three, that's not my wife, that's not if I had another kid, I don't, well, she does, it's me. You know, I just, I don't know if there, I guess what I'm saying is. It's just, it just seems like we can have a different option, like a family thing or. It just seems two fifty, it seems like a lot. We go from eighty to two fifty, and if you break it down by the month, maybe not. This is the.
But that's where I'm getting it.
I think the biggest part of the two fifty isn't that part of the kind of after-school programming, like you said before, knowing that you're gonna have. Some of those kids there that are, need the supervision.
Absolutely, but what about, what about those, those kids choose not to do that?
Right, right. Is there a way for us to maybe break that off? I know you said it's, and it is, it's very affordable if you are gonna send your kid there for a whole year after-school. Be supervised from three thirty to five, that's super duper 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 cheap.
Correct.
But not every kid's gonna do that, and that's where I get it, super duper immediate expensive. For the two hundred fifty for a kid, well, if there is any way that we can break that off of that, and I don't know how you do it. Because now you gotta decide, alright, who's in the after-school program, if not, are you not letting kids that. Have the student pass or the the junior pass to come in during those hours, you know, I get the logistics of that's gonna be probably ninety.
Well, and and I am, Brian thought it up, I am a perfect example of my argument. I'm the perfect example of, gonna be the parent that's in there.
Yeah.
Going in to work with my kids, hitting and throwing like we've always done for years and years, will continue to do on the inside. But, and there's gonna be other kid, there's other, gonna be other parents, I would pick on Steve if he was here, but he's not. You know, he's gonna wanna go in there and kick the ball around and do soccer stuff with his kids, they're huge soccer, you know? He's gonna, it's gonna be the same thing, it's, you know, when it's nights out, they're not gonna be inside, and I know I'm not gonna be that only parent. I'm not saying to throw this in the garbage can by any, because I agree, kids are gonna be there every day after school. And absolutely, there's a cost involved, but I think there has to be a middle ground somewhere for people like me. And I'm not arguing, and I'm not arguing to say just for me, cause.
Perhaps we need to discuss maybe a monthly rate, kind of similar what we were talking about with the adults, ten to twelve dollars a month. Or a year-long program. Maybe, you know, if you think we're going to be seeing uh, more seasonal use for a facility with people. In their families like yourselves, maybe you can go monthly or quarterly, something, I don't know.
Well, or, but maybe something like a, and I know you get in front a lot of time, I hate to muddy the water, be that guy, but I'm gonna be that guy.
Twenty, twenty or twenty-five dollars a month for anything you can do with team for an entire.
Well, and the thing about it is, is maybe there needs to be like a non-program like. High school raiders out there, I don't know, I mean, I don't know, what are the, it's my other question, we're getting beyond this and. You know, like if I wanna rent, you know, I have a fob through the school, so I can get into all the gyms. Um, so and I can get on uh. What's it called, the scheduled program that was.
Yes, hard to get on.
Yeah, yes, and reserve the gym if it's open with for my A A U team. Is that gonna be something we can do with this, probably not me, cause I'm not coaching anymore, but. Any of those coaches, is that something they'll be able to do this without all the kids having to have a, a thing, or is that I just go back to renting it by the hour?
But if the kids had that, it would be included, does that make sense?
Yeah, then everyone. Any of the adult.
No, no, it wouldn't.
So one, if one kid had it, the whole team could go practice?
Once again, it's a five-dollar day, it's a weird thing, five dollars.
But but you'd have to have an adult hundred twenty dollar pass for adult supervision.
To reserve the coach, the coach can drive you there.
I know, but I'm just saying.
They could do the five, they could do punch pass to the five dollars.
And then, but still pay the hourly rate, the rental rate? To reserve the help to pay the rate, is that right?
You're mixing the two together, so it's one or the other, per se, if someone rents it, if you're gonna rent it, just rent it, okay? But yes, in order to go in at a time, so it would all depend, are we, if if it's a rented space. So we're mixing a whole bunch of different things together here and a whole bunch of different scenarios, which is making it very difficult. Because it's, that's where it gets really hard to explain what, because of the mixing of the two, all of them together. Um, so.
But I don't think the only one's gonna do it.
And I think that's what caused some of it too, is I think everybody started doing that in their head, like how it affects their family and.
Right, I understand that, so. If you. Are a person, this is what I think, okay, is. We need our adults that are going to be utilizing some of these services. To have this adult access pass. To be responsible for the kids that they're gonna be bringing into the facility, okay? And that is the key to that. I think, is that's the whole key to the adult access pass, and that is why that is less expensive. Now, could could we pull apart, pull away the after school thing, yeah? And could then could the youth pass be less expensive? Yes, probably, however, I still do feel as still as if the value of. Of a person being able to go in and rent those batting cages whenever they want to. Anytime throughout the year is worth two hundred fifty dollars, I think I showed that as that was like the low end of any facility. That I've used the upper city, um, Diamond in the Rock, that was an example for that. Okay, that's the low end, okay, two hundred fifty dollars. But we were just adding all of that other stuff in to make it really be something that people can be like, oh, yes, this makes sense. But if we wanna pull that off, I think we could come up with a more affordable option, um, if we don't think that that's affordable, so. Or a different option.
Well, I just think from some of the feedback and and not just the Facebook feedback, even how that was, because some other people I talked to that. If there was. If it could be something where you're with your parents all the time. Which a lot of the high school kids, because it does look to me like for two fifty. My high schooler could go to basket anytime he wanted without dad though, or mom, because they have to be adult supervisor, supervised by adult. So.
So, what you've got, I guess.
Yeah.
Once again, this was just a starting point, right?
Right, and and that's why I'm just bringing up.
Yeah, it's a starting point, and and.
And I know we don't want high school kids. Bobbing in, bopping adult, at nine o'clock at night.
Well, that's a really bad idea.
Right, right, and that's why your father aren't gonna be available for these kids, but that's why they have to be adult, but. That's the whole thing, if they have to be as adult, maybe we need to have a family thing instead of.
So.
I mean, just for two fifty. I don't know, if you're just gonna drop in and, drop in with an adult all the time. You know, and I know we're comparing to others, but. I don't know, I'd like more people to use it, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use the analogy of working at the booster concession stand, I run the booster board. Let's sell twenty sandwiches and make two dollars instead of selling ten sandwiches and trying to make five dollars. You know, I think the more people we can get to use it. You know, may, you know, I know that we said it in one of the emails out, and they'll give a sentiment that, hey, let's start somewhere and see how it works and. Adjust after that, but to me, maybe we need to start at the other end. I I I don't know.
So can I tell you my concern for, so my concern is, is that at the prices that we have, everything's sold out currently. I feel as if, if. We, um, I think one of the things, I'm gonna.
Yeah, he's been talking.
Um, maybe what we need to do is show the other proposal that we have, and then we can talk about that. And then we can talk about the pros and cons of each.
Okay.
Maybe that would be.
And we have a common pool, I heard, given.
Mine was basically what, kind of what Brian was saying, but so basically, it's never just a child pass, right? There's everything, it's never just a child, it's always a child plus the goal, right? If they always have, like, I have a ten year old, he's gonna wanna go there all the time, I don't necessarily wanna go, but I have to, it's like. Or we drop in and it's not just five dollars, ten, right? Yeah, I'll tell you that. We change the traffic.
And if I if I if I'm right, drop in is only during eight o'clock, or during. During a program hour. Well, that, but you don't have to pay the program hours, like, because they just said we can use the open, anything that's not being used during open. You don't have to pay the extra to use it, if you have the track.
You just don't get to reserve it.
Right.
We've done the next plan.
Well, they were, we're not trying to attack your idea, we're just. A lot of people have been bugging me about it, and I've talked to a lot of people about it, I.
Because, Brian, I, you know, I've been here having kids for a long time, so you know I'm not beating you up, well.
Absolutely, yeah. And I can sit here and tell you all the scenarios that I can think of as to why we, we thought that this would be a good route to go. People do that when we talk about the pros and cons of these two, because. This is gonna look better on paper, okay? What this is, is gonna, like I said, it'll look better on paper, but I think it's gonna cost. Some people more in the long run, so. So the playground and track passes, that's the same, okay, can we just skip over that, we all understand that now, right? Um, then, a youth access pass would be fifty dollars, so basically what we did is took that. That, um, after school program out, and that's what we came up with, okay? Um, and we went two to eighteen, because we figured, well, this keep consistent with like one hundred, what what are they gonna do? Field house, right, like, probably, think of coming in hardware. Um, and they would still have that until from five to eleven, we need by adult adult access pass. The adult access pass. Um. It's. Is once again, facility access from five to eleven, and then you can pay them monthly, B or A per year, um, include all that. And then, use areas may be limited due to facility schedule, including programs and rentals. Eleven P, right, so that's something we'll talk about further in the morning later, okay? And then that drop in punch pass will be at five dollars per day, and that we bought on the record, that's in five day increments, so it costs twenty five dollars. Particularly to get a punch pass, but even when you went in, we would be done, we would be a month away. Um, the batting cages would be available by rental only. Okay, so we get rid of that, it's just rental only. Um, each batting cage can be rented by individuals with an adult access pass for twenty five dollars an hour with a maximum of three individuals utilizing the cage, including the adult supervisor. Teams using the batting cages must run the entire curve in a dollar per. So, to go back to your question, Brian, with the batting cages, wait, so. You would have to have your adult access pass, it would cost twenty five dollars to rent it. Sam and Peyton could go with you, it's costing twenty five bucks. Plus your hundred and twenty that you spent for the whole year, okay?
And they both have to pay five bucks, got it?
No, it's you rent it.
Okay.
You rent it, okay. But the key is that teams using the batting cages must run the entire. The turf turf and courts would be available by rental or drop in use during non after program hours, drop in use. You go in, you can probably, probably could bob in with, or maybe you would just leave your, or you have your, um. Drop in use must have an access pass, so you you can bob even. Um, our after school open gym will become a program, not included in the pass, and then one club club becomes a program and not included in the pass. So that would cost four additional dollars if we wanted to sign for either one of us. Okay, so is the only thing that doesn't make sense here.
Am I following here that on this one, the turf and courts are pulled out of the playground track path for drop in?
The turf and courts are what I'm.
Are they, is that pulled out of the, the?
No, it stays the same as the playground track pass, it stays the same, so. It would be rental, where it's gonna cost you five bucks to go in and use it, so once again, it's for our pickleballers, it's for people coming in during the day. Or it's for people that that don't have the youth access pass with the adult access pass. So let me use the analogy, um, or I'll use Sarah as an example, okay, clearly. Sarah has an adult access pass, Lincoln has the youth pass, but Lincoln wants to bring a buddy who doesn't have the youth pass, okay? Sarah and Lincoln have their adult access, their their passes. Um, Fred comes in, so I can go, it's five dollars, all three can go in and use the court, or whatever. That makes sense to everyone, okay?
So can I, so could I?
Yeah.
Could I buy the punch pass and Barb use it if you wanted to come with?
No, you need to, so that's. Thing is individual, this is why we don't have family passes, because it gets too money with the family passes, okay? The water, the money.
Sorry, maybe I'm square, so if I buy the fun, five punch.
Yeah.
And, you know, Peyton's a gobbler, and she wants to drop in with her Houston. Just play back, and he's like five bucks, and then Barb come, play football. So each person has to have a rental guard.
Yes.
Okay, so like if Sam's pitching coach comes, I need to buy him a punch guard.
Yeah.
So he can slide in, except for three batting cages, where I could bring in. Okay, okay, got you, there's my.
Yeah. So this really simplifies this a lot, okay, but there are pros and downs.
Well, and and I'll, I'll speak up a little. I like this as surface value than the other one, and this is why. I think this gives. Maybe some. I can say low income, but people that don't wanna spend money. A different avenue, and then if they want to have their kid be in an after school program, that's their choice to spend that after month, it's, uh. You know, it's not the all or nothing type thing, where some people have problems with that, or sixty dollars is a lot easier than a two fifty. And also then, eh, I really want my kid to do the after school program, and it's. How much you guys decide it's gonna be, you know, then that's their choice to do, rather than. I don't know if my kid's gonna do the after school program, but I kinda like getting the pass anyway. I don't, that's gotta buy, like, it.
But.
You know, we are.
Okay, but with that, that's, yes, those are the advantages to this, okay, the disadvantage is, is that. Every time that you wanna utilize a batting cage, you're renting it at twenty five dollars per hour, okay?
Oh, yeah.
So, so if you, if you do the math on, you can figure out how many times that is for horse than the entire year, that you would get to utilize that.
Yeah.
Whereas it was.
Thank you, thank you, sure.
Well, that all the difference.
I mean. It would be, it's rental space.
So I'll throw this out there, would there be the possibility that to go more this route where you have the this pass, but maybe do. A pass specific for baseball, softball, those things at a higher level, that, almost like emerging of the two plans. Maybe do a higher level pass that would include, because maybe you're a family that that just wants to work, basically you don't care about the batting cages and the pitching machines. So maybe you want the lower, but if you're a family big into baseball, softball, and you're gonna spend a lot of time with the batting cages and the. The pitching machines are things that cost more, maybe you pay a higher pass that includes that.
Page program, you can just, you know, like, I don't know, some creative name that someone.
You just need to be separate, because they're, they're high volume, they're high dollar, I think balls are expensive. But that, wait, babe. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because you know, machines are expensive, ball are expensive, and L streams are, I mean, that, a lot of expensive equipment, that's why. I think it has these, that is, really kicking all, it's a recipe.
Well, just so I got this straight, the drop in punch pass is probably just one area of this point. It's like a code that you're gonna get, and then every time you put that code in, it'll knock off one of your punches, so you don't have to have that.
So that way, if they're on one of those open times, let's say, um, yeah, people could come in with the supervision. Whoever, whichever can draw the short shot, if it hits, your house, okay, yeah.
But I'm kind of.
So, like, your guys' job was more complicated. We have all both these options.
Well, the only thing that's different was the left lane, junior lane, legends, third thing out, the adult pass, playground, track, or the same, so there's really only one more option.
That's what I'm saying.
You have two, this basically is two different kids up, and one has less, one has everything.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not by age, rather than if you're going with the eighteen.
Yeah, for the sixty dollars.
Uh, for giving. Somebody wants to do more, they pay more. Well, that, yeah, or if they want. More regular, that's not regular. I'll get there. Once again, we were trying, so I hope everyone understands what we were trying to do, we were trying to keep, we were trying to include it all, for one. Okay, so that's what we were trying to do, um. And I guess we'd have to put some thought process into. Um, you know, what I've heard tonight is we need to keep like the batting cages area basically separate, as its own different thing.
Well, I don't know, that's necessarily, that's, but you were, you were used to me as an example, that's how we talk, I think it's maybe more. You know, it's not giving just the baseball, softball people, there's gonna be. People that wanna come in and just maybe shoot baskets with our high schooler. At eight o'clock at night, that still doesn't want to pay two hundred fifty dollars and a hundred twenty dollars to shoot baskets.
Right, I think that this one's problematic, right?
Absolutely, so I mean, I think that was my point when we were talking about this.
But I think what is, but just.
Yeah, too, right, so I just be there, and we're still the five dollar. And that was still there to be able to do, but yes, that un-money is the cap, okay? So.
But does that exclude the ability to have an all access type pass bill for people who want that level? Because I think what what I was doing for people is. Just to make sure that it's as accessible to everybody, having a lower entry point for folks who maybe don't want all the building tools. But at the same time, you don't wanna necessarily hurt the people who do wanna give it all the time.
Um, another big change is the all access pass, different adult here to here. You know, this one includes everything that you can reserve here. Well, batting cages are the only one.
And that's, I mean, I look at that two hundred and fifty as an all access pass.
There's what?
It's an all access pass, the two hundred and fifty, so that that's what you're, that that's kind of what.
But but then there wasn't an option for people who just want more mid level, because you have to get some free stuff, you have the expensive stuff, but the people in the middle, I think, is where. The sticker shop was. But I think if you're a big baseball fan, and you think you're gonna be in there all the time, you probably look at two fifty and maybe not blink an eye, because you're spending. Way more than that for one weekend to travel with your kid's team, while it weren't that, yeah.
Looking at it. I would speed down basket, you don't want, you don't want me in no matter what's.
Yeah, at three o'clock in the morning, uh, but one thing I just want to make sure that. That's what we were trying to do. So the people that would buy this this pass, that were all in people, I view them as Nevada people. And the thought was, we would give Nevada people first opportunity with this pass, we could actually give them. A little bit more time to rent, or reserve, not rent, but reserve their space, okay? Um, and then we could fill in with rentals, okay, does that make sense to everyone? So we were given, our people, like the Mike Millers of the world, the chance to reserve their space. Ahead of what other outlying people might come in and reserve that space for a whole team, or what, where it might be. But, I don't know, we're gonna have, we'd have to look at how we can merge, like you're saying, offer both. We'd have to look at that and see what that might look like and how that might look, um. It's cleaner, if we wanna make this cleaner, it's cleaner just to leave the batting cages in that area, it's just rented like from. But I think that that's unfortunate for the Mike Millers of the world, who would wanna go in and hit for his kid. And some of the other boys that he coaches, and knowing that he could have access to that year round, but maybe I'm wrong, right? Maybe it is, like for an occasion. I don't know, but that's, it's a good question, it's the cost benefit, I mean, at the end of the day, that's. I don't know. But that's, it's a good question. It's the cost benefit of it, but at the end of the day, that's what I'm, I'm shaped with. What do you perceive it as?
Well, and that's, maybe I'm confused when we're talking about the all inclusive one, that. So let's say that Mike wanted to, he's got the all access and he wants to rent it, cause he can rent it, part of the deal. But then he wants three of his, three of his boys or girls.
I think that's the key is with the adult access pass, he can reserve.
Yeah.
Reserve.
But then say there's three or four girls or boys, I don't know, baseball, softball. He wants to come in there and wanna work on it, but every one of those kids would have to have this pass. Or can they pay the five dollar?
I'll pay five dollars.
Oh, see, I was confused earlier because I thought.
Even in the off hours?
So you, so. So you could, so I, I'll say, say I want in there.
It's actually ten dollar often before the batting cages because otherwise. There's other reasons as to why it has to be ten dollars because the money doesn't equate up. This money would go in a rental and then what they would do is they didn't only end up being fifteen dollars, right? So it's ten dollars for the drop in fee for the.
So it wasn't. I was confused with the drop in fee I had.
Yes.
So the kids, if you have an adult pass and I wanted Mike's kid and Barb's kid to come in because I'm their coach, they could, they would have to pay a five dollar drop.
Ten dollars?
Yeah, cause we're using one key. So they wouldn't have.
Oh, that's what I was trying to say.
Oh, see, I'm.
Yeah, don't, that's, that's what I was looking to say. But if you wanted that, it's a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
But if you don't want it, then you can pay the five dollars and all you have to do is have somebody. Is in your group that has that adult access pass and you can probably pay five dollars.
So with the two hundred and fifty, if you use that three or four times a month, you would be making it up on the. On the ten dollar drop again. I was really at the second.
My concern is, is that it's going, if we go rental rentals in that area specifically, we'll just talk about that area. That's, that's the area that I think is wanting to be highly sought out. Is, it's going to be rented a lot, okay? And I would really, really, really love to see our Nevada people be able to have first crack at utilizing that space. That was the whole point of this. Was that specific?
And no matter which way we go, it's still gonna be more including the adult.
And.
Did the cage even include like one of one and ten? That the same as the batting cage?
Yeah, I mean, it's, but we can, we.
It's the same area.
It's the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
It only took like forty-five minutes to make me.
Mike, if you want to.
Yeah, Mike, come on.
So I coached a couple, we're, we're starting two, um, tournament baseball team. We've had one go and we're starting another one. So I was hoping to utilize the facility for indoor practices and batting cages, but I go and take two kids at a time. Now you're talking, because I'm the third adult, so I have to be there. So now I'm spending five hours a day trying to get each of my kids in. To bat in the cages. Uh, also, so like, do, if I wanna do the soccer field for a practice, um. Do every one of my kids have to pay five dollars or how does that, you know, if I have a membership, do I buy the membership and each one of my kids have to pay five dollars for practice or do they need? To have memberships as well? You know, like it's gonna get expensive if I have twenty, two, twenty-four kids that are trying to. Practice indoors. And I just, I don't know, like the team aspect, I haven't, I've heard a lot about family, but I haven't heard about team practices and. Well, they can come, you know, come a team for like to, to, to their practice.
Okay. So with, with team practices, um. So the, the thought behind team practices would be that. There would be a fee for team practices, but if they, they could still go in. Like, let's say the kid, let's say your kids had, um, you can rent the space, right? So that's always an option. Renting the space for an hour, it would be a hundred dollars for the hour for both cages plus the side turf area. If you have a team of ten, that's ten dollars per kid for time that you use it. Those kids that would have the pass wouldn't have to pay. That would, that would, their two hundred and fifty dollars, if they had their two hundred and fifty dollar pass, right? That they wouldn't have to pay. Any other kids that were coming in wouldn't have to pay the ten dollars that didn't have. They're gonna make funds.
So a hundred dollar block and per kid?
No, no, no.
Okay, okay.
So if you divide it out, if you reserve the space, Mike, you're in an adult access, right, person? If, we have to look at, a team would come in, if a team comes in, they're gonna use both cages and the side turf area. So that space would have to be reserved at a hundred dollars per hour, let's say. Okay, so we wanna get our hundred dollars. Any way you look at it. If each kid, let's say, I, what I would do in that situation is, let's say, half the kids have the two hundred and fifty dollar pass. They'd be included. The other five kids would need to pay. Pay ten dollars for, for the hour, if that makes sense. We can work it. And that to me is fair, okay? Because you're not gonna go find another area where you can reserve space, I think, for that for an hour for, for less than.
So then the team is only paid fifty dollars for those five dropping kids?
The team. Once again, with Mike with an adult access pass, we can work with him on, on making it equate out to be the hundred dollars per hour if he has kids that have both.
Good.
All right? Yes. So I think that's the pro of having our Nevada people being able to, or people we know. Like Mike knows that I've worked with them on tons of things and making things work out, right? Which we do. At the end of the day, we're looking at getting. What would equate to a hundred dollars for the hour for the batting cage. It's okay if some kids have passes, it's okay if some kids have to pay the drop in rate. At the end of the day, we want it to be equated out to the hundred dollars. Most of the time, you probably have not any kids, right?
It, yeah, we have.
Yeah.
Ten to twenty, yeah. I mean, cause we have two teams going on, so.
Right.
But we need two hours, yeah.
Probably a little too many, I would say.
Uh, I mean, we do two hours, I mean.
Yes, yes. Talk about that, work that out. But that's what we can do when we live in a community of this size of ours, is we can work on that. Because it's great that you're having two tournament teams that have baby kids on it and you're gonna go play baseball and you're gonna have a football, with baseball group. So that's what we, that's what I would like to see supported through our department. We can do that and we wanna make that work for you over. So and so coming over from, I can see deploying teams coming over here for a hundred dollars an hour and you want space or any teams or whoever. Yeah, they're gonna pay a hundred dollars per hour, per hour. And we're gonna probably have to provide the staff, a staff person to be there, cause we're gonna have to watch them and all that kinds. Whereas I know Mike comes in and I don't have to do that, so we, we'll work it out. I mean, I think at the end of the day, we're just trying to do what's, what's best for our communities and giving our community the first opportunity to utilize the facility. Without having a whole bunch of other teams and a whole bunch of other people come in and rent all the space before our people have a chance to, to do it. And that's the point of having the adult access pass is to make that source of renewable space and then fill in with the team rentals. But Mike, you would have an opportunity to do that because you have a, where you have. It's all workable. Everything's workable. I don't know what this thing really, really costs at the end of the day, but I do know that everything's workable. And we wanna do what that is for our community. So we could come back with some sort of. We could use. This, right? The second proposal, we could use that and we could come back with some sort of. Thing for just the batting cages and that batting cage base. Or we could stick with the first proposal, which really takes care of it. I think, or, and or we could just leave, we could maybe even. Like come back with a blend of the two. Figure that out. I don't, I don't know.
It's the way the first proposal, ten times in the batting cage, we pay for the better. I mean, if you did nothing but use the batting cages, that's two fifty paid for and it hurts the batting cage rent.
Not everybody's utilizing batting.
Right, I know, but I'm just, yeah.
That's what I think if we figure out.
Figure out a way to have a hybrid.
Hybrid or a batting cage, drop in, they get the, the different, the, if you do. Because batting cage is about all I want, you know, like.
Right.
You know, like, so I don't wanna pay twenty-five dollars each time I rent it when, you know. Because I would use it three, three times a week, you know?
That's what I, I was thinking of people like you when I came up with that, the thought.
So true.
Yeah.
You know?
That's.
I was with you.
I was like, I wanna try to make this technical, but. Because, because I know there's, also I know there's value to it, and we wanna make sure that. That we're giving people what they want, but we can't just give it away. Otherwise, if we do that, we're gonna have far as many others coming in or taking all of that space. So there's balance. In the initial promo proposal, we talked about balance and that was a balance between. Reserveable space by people with our adult access pass and then rentable space. That's what the balance is. I'd really like to reserve it to people like you, Mike, and people like you, Brian, who would have that adult access. For kids before we've rented out. Cause that makes sense. That's why I, but.
But I think if you give the kids other options like your second one, I mean, there's some great stuff on both of these. Thing, yeah, this is how both of these, can we merge in that? Make it so the people that don't wanna spend that money, do they still have that app? And they still take their kid in there, getting one. But that bad trip or, you know, if you got a certain one, you gotta pay extra, they gotta pay extra. You know, but let people choose, I guess, more. I don't know if that makes sense, but you know.
It, it does. And I think you gotta go off and come, come with, okay, what does that look like? And are we able to make that? Work with. Within the software system, is that important, right? Um, so within that system and then. Just the logistics of.
Well, is it even feasible to think about having a. In Taunee and without a Taunee, or that just totally more just like a late night marriage?
He did. That was something that Story County specifically asked when we gave this. That we don't do that, but they did not, they did not say we could not do that for a house and that story tomorrow. You know, but with, within Story County, that was one of the main concerns that.
You know, being these just story county, we can do here all people. You know, I think one thing you remember too with this is a lot of this stuff, this is. None of this. But it would you from participating in any program that we offer, you can come pay it, you know, pay this kind of basketball. And just, you just order basketball, that's it, you know, so, um. It doesn't, uh, it doesn't prevent you from doing any of our programs.
I think when we do put out an occasion, I think having that very goal would be an important part. I think people miss that, so. I'll make sure Marla hears that loud and clear. That if people participate in programming, they don't have to pay for this extra stuff. Cause I think people lost that in the original. And then just. Some things like where it says drop and you've got that active pass or drop and punch pass, like maybe to clear that there's still that free. Option up top, but, cause I think people are gonna read into things and so it's clear that maybe it may get better.
Right.
I would think since there have been so many questions, that it's even as frequently as what I think to go with the, to be known of more.
And I, and some of that we're gonna have to, um, handle on a case by case basis, so.
We don't, we don't answer some people's situations. One thing I wanna make clear as well is that. We have, I mean. We've always worked with people on providing opportunities for individuals who might be of lower income or. With scholarships, we've worked with Jody Harry on the schools and helped provide those. And we've never denied participation in the opportunity to utilize facilities to anyone in this community. At least for the last twenty-three years and nobody went there. So that's in thirty years, okay? So. Everything is workable. And I think that that's another big takeaway is everything's workable. In that we want people that wanna utilize our programs and services to have the opportunity to utilize them regardless of. How much money they can pay or not pay. And however, we do want them to have skin in the game. We have found that over the years that it's important for them to have, to give a little bit towards the pool packs or to give a little bit towards the program. That way they show up and they're, they're involved. But, um. Like I said, that's just something as well that we can work with our communities, make sure that. Individuals who may not be able to afford something like this can still participate. Their value, make that happen.
I think that would be good to put on somehow on the materials, even if there's information about the college that. This, I, I think once we're done with this, it's a good comprehensive thing, that is, I know we won't get to everything, but it's a common question. Yeah.
Maybe that's one of the models from, from activity.
Yeah.
You're, you know, you've been, we've spoken to lots of people, so. We think, if we didn't, we're probably not there yet, but you think if people are asking now.
We can compile all those questions as they come up, or I can look at some of the questions that have come up. And we can start a document where we have the, the technical. Sure.
Everybody learns differently too. So even some of those videos you do, talking through some of it, I think it'd be helpful if we're ready for that. I would also encourage people to reach out and provide the scenario to. Rhonda and Tim, so they can break that down and, and tell you how that's gonna go. How much you'd be spending. How much it would cost for the whole entire activity of the program.
Right.
But reach out and.
I think asking questions is really important rather than just making assumptions. If people would ask questions, women. Who have thought about the place, want the opportunity to hire the problem for your family and. And the affordability of it, and that makes us redirect and relook at things and be like, okay, yeah, we didn't think about that, so let's think about this. See what, what we can come up with for us. So I, I guess I said this. I think it's workable. We just need to, uh. Think at the end of the day, we want what's best for our community and for our surrounding area and we wanna make it. A place that is heavily utilized and it's going to be that, um. And we look forward, I think, to coming back maybe with a little bit, a little bit better. For work, user, or inclusive plan, um, that has a couple of those maybe additions and they cleaned up a little bit, you know, a little. More easy to read, maybe even, um.
With the. With the, um. Website, the, the software that we use or stuff, is it pretty real time? Like if State Dane wants to go shoot back to the. You know, eight thirty, you think, oh man, I can rent the kids to go shoot back to the, we have some there, there's nothing at nine. Can you go ahead and reserve that close to the time and?
We haven't got there yet.
Okay, okay.
But, yes, well, we haven't got there yet.
Cause I just made me think of Mike said, well, I would be there a few times a week. Me too, maybe, but sometimes it's. Me too, maybe, but sometimes it's like, hey, I got home from my meeting, let's go shoot baskets, you know?
Sure.
You know, are there all, it looks like there's nobody there, and you just go up, take your pants, or is it better than?
Well, if, if you have your. It isn't.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I didn't know, you know, but then you know, then Mike decides to do the same thing. We're both standing there, you know, with some batting cage and that, really.
Yeah, I just want to know.
Yeah, we'll have to, have to look it all, all in back. Yeah, and see, I don't know how, I don't know what that looks like, but yeah, we're. I would say that it would be, be feasible for that to happen, if it's open, but. Okay.
You know, the other thing with this is, yeah, you know, the doors.
You know.
I would feel like you guys started a party.
I think it's gonna, you guys will have terminal key patterns are, how you lost to lose it, whatever, um, you know, the busy times, I, I mean, I'm just definitely, they want to, so, um, you know, I've sent this all along, and I think this for here can be very fluid for us, and we're gonna help with changes as we go through, and I just hope that, you know, people will be understanding. So changes will be as necessary as we can, if we want to do. So it'll be all the time that I'm, those use.
From a timeline standpoint, I assume you'd like something approved by the end of October for the last, cause the next thing you'd like right before the opening.
Well, we would in my mind is, it would be great to have something before the dedication.
Yeah.
I think we have next council meeting, bring something back, and then the first one. The main.
That's what I'm getting, because we could, we could have it on the next agenda as an act item, but still allow robust public input during the process and allow confirmation. Or we could do an overwork session, and then do that kind of second, but I wanted to know what type of your timeline.
Well, our thought is, we'll, we'll prepare some small pieces of change for this, and then we'll turn. Or we have their recommendation, and then, you know, we'll push it out, you know, like, we'll add a series of like. I'm gonna answer those, but we're probably gonna, you know, get this to a point where everybody's acting pretty good on any moment, getting up forward to go ahead and take that, I think that'll work.
And from here, you prefer us having an action item on the next agenda?
I think so, and then I think you have the fault.
You can table. Okay. Well, you know, I understand the way about. It may make it a lot easier to explain to the people who press. And in the meantime, I know Marla's in quotes this, but I think our messaging should probably be, if you have questions, direct them to staff, so they can walk through scenarios and include any of those considerations in what we're putting together.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Directly to staff.
Very helpful.
So I should warn you guys' cell phone number.
Email. Whatever you want.
Yeah, you're it.
Do you get that part, Marla?
Yeah.
Hi, Joe. Okay. Is there anything else you need to hit on with this, Mike?
Just wanted to offer, something that is clear on the other side, um, we had, I had a parent that was seven, nine year old, that are so excited about the extra space and not having baby basketball, I mean, it's all they do. And they're so excited about not having things in pottery, thirty, and I know that the kids weren't so much the focus, um, with, with the schedule and stuff, but after listening to what's here, you know, they have the playground and track just kind of being something that they can do, they could go ahead and register for, and they're trying to register for program, and they can just do basketball, but then that that, you know, playground, track, and uptime, you know, kind of, it is always available. Um, there, there just might be opportunities for kids to discover that if they like to do some of this as well. But they're super excited about basketball, not starting with.
They're super excited about. Yeah. Yeah, like they're reading. That's, that's, that is really positive, I think, in their. Yeah, there'll be lots of opportunities, and lots of availability for, for things that people to experience that they never even might have known that they, they like or enjoy.
And I think that would be. Ninety percent of the time. Because we see just those products, just a lot of.
Yes. Yeah, there's a lot of time available that people didn't, didn't know, yeah. And, and I, once again, I don't think we made that up here, in what we put in the council packet, so I hope that's.
I, um, I do want.
You have to, I think, immediately. Also, maybe, uh, probably the best. That we got.
I'm gonna have to thank, want to thank the park board for putting time in and being here and doing what you do. Looking forward to seeing return information.
Me too. We'd like the park board to tell my value for it, you guys get here, we'll get it, I don't know what it is, but that's all. Nice work, Park, correct?
Both Rhonda and Tim have put in extraordinary amount of hours in time, especially on this gray area of.
Yeah.
How are we going to fund and schedule things, you know, it's when you've got something, a structure in front of you, you can deal with it, but the unknown is always the most difficult, and Rhonda coming in an incredible job, we should all be very proud of.
That's a good note to add, so, thank you, well, and the work.